All right, so we have minutes Jeremiah. Then we have a motion, then we have a second on it. And I took a vote, but I'm gonna take a roll call vote now. Do you copy that?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna say Jeremiah, how do you, uh, do you, uh, okay with minutes for eight one?
Yes, I vote aye.
Okay. And Ryan, aye. And myself, aye. Dave, aye. And Jeff, aye. Okay. That's your right control five in favor, no opposed. Okay, the minutes for eight fifteen, aye.
Spears will be listed August fifteenth.
Okay, I have a motion for a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? During that, all, uh, let's see, a roll call vote will be Jeremiah.
Aye.
Ryan, aye. Myself, aye. Dave, aye. And Jeff, aye. So five in favor, no opposed. Okay, that was painful.
Would you want, uh, send me the July, since they're putting them late, but it's been a minute.
I'm sorry?
July eighteen minutes.
Oh.
Put them in late spring.
Okay, because they're not showing up on the day.
Because I didn't want to mention.
Pardon?
It's standing, but I couldn't put it in the sheet of mine.
Uh huh. Next time.
Next time.
We'll get them next time. I paid attention.
I know.
You got two.
Yeah, yes.
But that ain't bad.
So then we go back to. Uh, let me just look at here.
The freezing days too.
Yep. And I'll just. We read all this a couple of days ago. Okay, well, we've got Eden Circle coming up at seven forty-five. So, uh.
You know.
Pardon?
Could do that in time up there.
Yeah, we got, we're at seven. The clock is wrong. I guess seven, I guess six.
Yeah, me too. On that phone.
Yeah, I'm assuming that, uh, that the, um, Big Brother's not wrong, that it is seven forty-six. All right, being seven forty-six, I'm gonna do, uh, open our hearing for, uh, speed acceptance for, uh, Eden Circle. Danielle, have you, uh, any questions on this?
Um, we've received a report from GM two, uh, they took their inspection and reviewed the plans. They were satisfied with everything in plans. Um, we also had a positive recommendation from the town engineer and town council has also reviewed the documents that were sent. So, um, there are no issues, so.
I guess, I guess it was a couple of things and they took care of them and then.
There were some things they were cared, um, those are part of the need.
Everything was taken care of. Jill, do you have something?
Nope, just if you wanted to have a question, I can hear on behalf of, um, the asset.
We know it is. All right, thank you very much. Okay, um, so before we go, does anybody have any questions on Eden Circle?
I read the, read the terrorist slide from GM two, read Gaines.
Yep.
Uh, email of Danielle, so I can.
That seems, that, that, that seemed to go along fairly smoothly, that whole process. I think we didn't have much, uh, any issues with that, that side at all.
No.
So, uh, good developer, I guess, didn't lose out there. And I think the original approval was a little tricky, but, um, once they got it all figured out. Couple of little missteps on the way, but they, uh, got it all figured out and came out good, so. Oh, all right, uh, Ryan, we have a motion for a second.
Mr. Pierce, I read that the planning commission vote to endorse the as-built, that's for Eden Circle. That the community planning commission recognized acceptance as a public way, that the article fully to the site for inclusion, the October fourth, three, of the awards.
Thank you. Second, I'm motion. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? During that, I'll do a roll call vote. Jeremiah, how's Hayden?
Aye.
Yeah, Ryan, aye. Hayden, aye. And Jeff, aye. And myself, aye. So, uh, five in favor, no opposed, we will move that on to the, uh, the slide. Thank you. And thank you again Jill for coming.
Yeah, we'd say we're all that easy, right?
Well, I mean, that, 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 you know, good when you, where you've been on the whole time, I mean, we have no, no issue.
No, I agree.
So it's, uh, it hasn't been well done, so.
Been doing this a long time too, know how to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, that helps. Okay. Well, we can think about knocking off one of these, uh, DBAs as we work our way towards eight o'clock shortly. Okay, Fifteen Shore Road, this is my first one up here, so, uh. Um, how much patient special carer to run her office for her dog training business out of her home at Fifteen Shore Road. I believe I read through this and it basically says no dogs were coming to that address.
Yeah.
Just gonna run the office out of there. Totally saying, so long, I would say, uh, as long as it meets the, as long as the office size meets criteria in the bylaw. I think we're probably okay with that. Got any questions on any of that, Jeff? Okay, anything we just, your identification, something like this is strictly an office type use, you just refer them to the bylaw, for the three hundred square meters, so. And, um, the only other question would be on this would be, uh, vehicles, they have one vehicle there, so there's advertising on, so. As they follow by law, then we should be good. And the next one is, um, Twenty Williams Road, Williams, William Street, uh, it's Williams Road, I think, actually. Did anybody look at that?
Yeah. It's a, there's a, right now, there's a sun porch over on the left side of the property, um, that's about fourteen feet from the property line.
Yeah.
Twenty-five required.
Yeah.
So, uh, they wanna tear down this sun porch and build a ten by twenty addition, it's ten or twenty. Um, and that brings up about ten feet from the property line.
Yeah, so I think that's close by.
Close, yeah, and they, the reasoning for doing so would be that the other side, which has a lot more land, would not make it feasible to put on a second story. Well, the elevations, I can't quite.
Yeah, you know. That's what I was thinking.
Challenge that, but.
Same thing I looked at, I said, they got a, an half an acre on the other side, and they're trying to squeeze us on this side. Um.
It's kind of a ZB A call, but mine wouldn't be like, be always, what's the hardship?
I didn't, I didn't look to see how close it was to the neighbor's house on the other side.
Not too bad, the house is on the left side of the lot, so it's not on that right side, so. Butter wise, it would tend to be.
So I would probably just say a butters.
Yeah, butters.
You know. And, um, again, with this, 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 to remind everybody, the idea behind these waivers is a hardship, you know, technically supposed to be hardships of some kind. That allows the, uh, what appeals to guaranteed waivers, so. Um, a lot of times we ask what the hardship is, but I guess in this case it's.
As stated, but I think that's where.
Discretion comes in.
Yeah, I, I just think it's not, again, under one board, but it's like hardship. If hardship is just, I can't put on a second story in the future, certainly get really loose. Cause you can apply that to every property, you know, like I can't do this, or, you know. I got a two and a half story, I want to add a third.
Yeah.
Hardship, I don't know, it just doesn't seem to be in the book of hardships.
Yeah.
But, uh, and I wish almost the town took the time, or it recorded all the, every hardship they, you know, every decision, if they reported the hardship, you'd have somewhat of a catalog of hardships. So you could say, oh yeah, that's, that's, we've done that, it has precedence, we've done that fifty times in the last ten years, but it seems like.
Well, sometimes hardship is a little hard to categorize, but for example, with, with, if they, they have two kids and they have a third kid and they need, and they need one roof for that child. And so they wanna add on so that they can keep that job, something like this, or to buy another house, you know, I mean.
Right. Well, that's, I'd be more apt to lean towards that hardship than just features, like, I can't build a second story in the future. It seems like, oh, you don't even know if you're DMs, right?
Right.
So the hardship too is also relative to the hardship endured by giving a lead, right? Where the water went fifteen feet from the broadening line, they're coming within seven feet, it's a big deal that they're under fifty people there.
Right, right.
Maybe it's less of a burden.
Right.
You know, proof so to speak of hardship, if there's no impact to the water.
Right.
But that's why, one of the things I would, I do on, on, uh, a request like this, say, I would just reference the waters, I would say, generally waters to make sure it's not encroaching on the others. You know, where they, with, uh, with the noise or whatever from this house, if it's coming too close. You know, so they don't feel like they live in a, a wrong, you know, roadhouse or something, next to a chilling.
Yeah, but at the same rate, when you, when you, you know, it's a, who comes first? So the, say the, the person next door, a year from now, two years after, long enough, is wants to add on now to the right side of their house, which would make sense, because their house is on the left. Yeah, say you approached on a setback or whatever, then the board's faced with next door butters, but the butters now ten feet away from the lot line.
Yeah.
And you rule against the guy, because you let the other guy go next.
Well, the other thing.
So that's what, that's part one.
You open a can of worms.
You just open a can of worms every time you allow. Or they have variants, I think.
Well, one of the things you can do in a situation like that you just described, would be to sort of, we would say that the building would just would require a barrier, or a little aridities, but, um, screening, the screening and noise screening. You know, I mean, there are, there are things that they could do, we could, we would, so in that case, where we thought if I did, because we could recommend screening or something.
Yeah.
And if anybody in the order to not do it, it would be their decision, that might be a recommendation that we would pass on.
Yeah.
Suppose we can define hardship. That's the problem.
Yeah, it is.
That's really the problem.
It's always been a problem.
But, but again, like I mentioned, it would be a bad idea if people tracked it.
Yeah.
And actually wrote down one sentence ever, on every decision.
And very rarely, you have to turn down to these various questions unless it's a real, unless it's a real.
If it's egregious, yeah.
Yeah, really, yeah, and. So, that's one, I guess, probably still.
It'd be interesting to tie that these back to what you were filing, like after they, after they go through CBA, like what can be done back there?
There always, yes.
I've never.
I sit, I'm, I'm the liaison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I should just be more proactive and looking it up afterwards, be curious, like, if any of this discussion ever moves a needle.
Yeah, I don't. Danielle can speak to, Danielle can speak to whether we ever have kind of like information sharing meetings in the asset, I don't, I don't know, but I agree a little bit, like, it seems like the, we were set by all these subdivision rules and the AARs in front of us, and there's, this we can't do and that can't do, can't do, you can't do. And as people from Anthony Road are, you know, kind of frustrated by, there's only so many things that we're, you know, we can do, whereas the CBA, literally do, they have the power to completely change the town.
Yeah.
You know, by the number of applicants, but I'm just saying, it's a, they have a lot of power.
We have a situation where we were gonna comply something and they went to the CBA and got a variance and then drive back to us, okay, we already went to areas, guess what?
Now you're gonna do it.
Now you go do the chat.
So that's the thing, a lot of people think we're an elected board, but they think we have power, but actually most powerful planning board will, was it, is the ZB A, right? They're appointed.
Right.
And, and they, taking rather decisions that don't really go by any kind of law, you know, just got it. We can't do got here, really, for the most part, you know.
Yeah, that's why.
Some PAs are also bound by regulations, and there are specific criteria for meeting a variance.
Like hardship?
Yes, there are, there are very specific criteria.
Funny, because they don't seem to really go by that.
They don't, they don't, but that's not.
I wouldn't know.
It doesn't mean that they have various.
But what I'm saying is, do we go by these rules? I would say, yeah, so that's, I'm just, I'm drawing the line, that there's a difference between the two boards, you know, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, they have, yeah, they're supposed to.
It's a little bit of a sticky wicket, a little bit, um. And we don't always agree with all of the decisions that they make, but we, uh, unfortunately, we like, we say, I'll do that and we're bound by it.
Just respect it, that's it. You know, just respect it along.
Yeah, a lot of times, they're out in the right place too, I mean, you know, especially in the, in the example I gave you, where they're gonna have another kid to lead the road.
Right.
And it may not be the best place to put it, but it's the place they can afford to put it. So, you know, you look at it, they look at it from that perspective sometimes. All right, so we're just gonna say about it on this one, um, we'll leave it at that. Eighty-five, no screen, this one is chickens.
This one's a funny one. Eighteen chickens.
How many?
Eighteen, they want to have.
But no roosters, we don't, we don't allow any roosters.
Based on a chick, an egg every twenty-four to twenty-six hours from a hen, that equates to ten and a half cartons of eggs a week. I mean, that's a lot, hundred and twenty-six eggs a week. And that's not related, so. Well, it says, it says for his family only, and are we approving barns or are we? Yeah, it's a, it's a CBA thing, but it just seems like that's both kind of getting a little excessive. If I was the next door neighbor, it sounds like eighteen chickens might be a little louder.
Well, my only, I don't saw it with you, they were asking for the fox.
Yeah.
There won't be eighteen.
Yeah.
The shrinkage. That's a good point, that should be a comeback, you should listen to you on that. Based on last summer's beer.
I grew up with chickens.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
You know, we had chickens.
No, I know, there you go.
And, uh, and we lost a fair number of ones in the barns, where we have constantly having to protect them, so.
It's a funny one, that's all.
You know, once we get to the roost, that slows things down.
Eighteen chickens, that's a lot, a lot of show.
Eggs are good, yeah.
I, well, no, they, not necessarily.
Just, yeah.
Actually, uh.
Not arguing.
Check the, check the dog, they tell you, it's not more than four eggs a month, a week. Yes, yeah.
I'm good.
It sounds for themselves, that is.
Yeah, well, they, I think they can sell, it's, because of agriculture, they can, in the state anyway, very protected by, by state law. That's why you can grow a garden and you can sell the vegetables and all that, you don't have to go get permanent.
If you want to have a question.
Yes.
So if, if, what is, what is that cap on chickens? So if someone comes next week and wants fifty chickens.
Again, this is.
I know it's an agricultural thing, but.
Discretionary call by the, by the CBA. I don't know if there's a limit to the number of chickens you can have in the bylaw. You do have to go and get a lawyer help and all that stuff, everybody has to sign off on it, so it's not, it's not a given.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. Now, as far as I know, and I believe it's true, I'm not having a limit on how many chickens you can have in the bylaw. Well, okay, well, that's where we're. That's where, okay, then we'll leave, any, did you want to, uh, did you want to draw a cloud limit to that, or did you, uh, that the CBA made the decision on their own, with how many chickens?
I don't, um, I can't say, there's nothing chicken, carries into, that doesn't like a lot of chickens, but.
Yeah.
I'd say neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually when you have chickens, you do increase the coyote slash box population in your neighborhood, that is true.
Yeah.
They will come.
Yeah, it's a restaurant.
It is, and it is.
Yeah.
But.
Been there, done that, so. All right, um, so we're just, we're just gonna leave it with the neighbors and, you know. If you want to put a question mark next to the eighteen, if we do that, Jeff, that, you think we should do that? Let's ask them to take a look at how many they're really gonna have. There. Uh, hang on a second, just back, I see an eye. All right, um, we have a continued public hearing for sixty-six Winter Street. At eight o'clock, and it'll be three, four o'clock. I'll open the, um, the, the, for sixty-six Winter Street.
Good evening, Jill, I'm, uh, yeah, sign, I think, um, yeah, connection is like, like Google and sixty-six Winter Street. We actually are going to, uh, be continuing the hearing, but I did want to give the board an update as to what's been going on. We didn't receive G two's first comment letter, it was, it was, um, very light, couldn't bring on any kind of a heavy lift to revise plans and to revise the stormwater report. Yet we could not get everything done back to G two, and then get G two's comments to you, to. Um, however, there are two matters that we would, um, like to discuss with the board. One of them was the traffic report, so we requested a way to do the traffic impact assessment. And G two actually agreed that there really was not a need with this type of use in this area, given that there's already an existing building and what we're proposing to do. That, that didn't give rise to the, to a traffic report assess, traffic impact assessment. However, he did ask a few questions, the board of the civil engineers just responding to a few of your, you know, site distance and a little other aspects. So that'll all be going back to G two, and then they'll give you their, um, opinion relative to the traffic. Um, so I would like the board to consider this evening, whether or not they accept that, because it would give us the opportunity, we had to get something, then we could do that before the next meeting. Um, that being the worst issue, I shouldn't say issue, the, the first, um, matter for this evening. And then the second one was, um, the sidewalks, I think Mr. Rudolph had asked us about putting in a sidewalk. And, um, actually, G two commented that it would be unsafe to do so, because it just stops. So people would be walking and then boom, no other sidewalk, and there's nowhere to extend it, because our neighbor doesn't have one. Um, it's my understanding, the board's real concern is that we allow our tenants and our occupants to actually walk and have a way to get from our property to Dunkin' Donuts. Presently, what they do is they actually have stepping stones. So what we're thinking about doing is simply putting in stepping stones and allowing that type of use. And then with regard to the next door neighbor, we have a very, um, we have a very amicable relationship, um, we've already discussed it, as you had asked, and everybody briefly put up a living screen. And I think that's what the board preferred to, using the aridity and not using the fence, it would be just a dead screen. Um, so I'm sure if, if that particular person wants us to, we'll put stepping stones along all of the frontages, you know, and all of the, um, landscaping, not on the right of way, which would have required a tremendous amount of excavation, remember in that area where it's kind of hill-like? In both sidewalks, we require actually the installation retaining, or even one near Dunkin' Donuts, just to be able to make it in that accessible. Cause the second we touch it, the second we say we're creating a sidewalk, it has to be. Um, so we're seeking some feedback from this board again, relative to the sidewalk, we can put in as means to go across, but not a, not really will accessible side. Um, and those are the really two issues, and that we would continue to the next evening, and have, have, um, hopefully from G two, a full sign up and possibly even a draft decision from the.
Yeah, it's actually heavily, it's fixed.
Sorry?
Heavenly don't.
Oh, heavenly don't, okay, that's.
Um, but it occurs to me that really the traffic, the, the people that are gonna be going to the dog shop are gonna come from that, that property. From a, not, not just your property, but your authority property there, they're gonna be blocking and try and find a way through, if you make that, that, uh, that, uh, wall, that live wall to, to dance. They were then to have them go down to the street, to walk up the street to get there.
We put a little end opening, so they can actually meet up with our landscaping, come around and easily traverse it, just like our people do.
You would have to put that on plan.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's gonna have to be simple, you have to put some kind of an access.
And we can do the shows where like, great entries, this Pierce, and then, you know, show where we direct them.
Um, I would, I would, uh, I would say you want to do something that, that, um, um, offers, you know, these, not a rise, but these of, uh, at least these are walking back, but they keep them from going down to the street.
Maybe we can do something.
I mean, I don't know what Dave was trying to do, is a sidewalk down all the way, so that they could come down their own driveway, get on the sidewalk and walk up. But that may not be practical, actually, considering the slope right there, anyway.
That's the problem, but what we can do.
So that means, that means, I'm suggesting that we need to find another way for them to get there.
And I think.
That it is a walking situation from where they are to there.
Right, and possibly we can do it with, um, this is parking lot, a lot of it's on your day, we can do it with a couple of things, whenever you did a, a grass surface, we can put some sort of stepping stones and direct it, and then from there, you can paint. So we can paint literally, you know, the access point, so people know where to walk and how to walk, and then it's safer, because visually people see that who are driving. Plus, it's not an active site, and people go in, as we had discussed, it's really.
Without a lot of traffic. Well, except in the morning when all the trucks leave.
Right, but they do that very, very early in the morning.
Yeah. But it's, it's, it's a very wide opening there, where they come in and out. So there's a lot of, um, choices about where they come and go, so I think that, so on top of, um, putting a, an opening of some kind to allow them to travel towards that, I think a crosswalk, paintable. From there, cross to the, where they're gonna walk down the hill, whatever it is, and whether you, and steps are okay, but keep them separate, because again.
Why, Mr. Jim, where you can, right, you're right, yeah. What block, where? There you is, no, I, that's what I'm saying, like, just right now, it's kind of a sidewalk in between the two companies. So when you, when you refer to moving, where else, am I missing?
To, um, the overall. You thought what I, I don't know next to it.
Right, so that's, that's what's there right now.
Yeah.
So that would be out for them to watch.
So, okay, so what I want is, um, what I'm saying is the paint stripe appears from where they come, through the live wall. So that is a, a locking area.
It turns, it turns, man, you're coming just as well.
No, well, certainly. Oh, here we go, trust.
So.
Well, we can come here and we will crosswalk.
Yeah, it's a very, totally right, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We can have more, even this is just, I haven't shared that one up this time. Um, it didn't, it was really this, and then I see this, that's real sideline, but, or strokes, so. Never been, I don't.
Yeah, no, we, 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 yes, I can start from four, so.
I mean.
Well, the idea, the idea behind.
I think totally crossing that is good, because it shows that there could be trucks leaving, there, you're supposed to, right?
Well, it's just that if you, yeah, you know, wherever they enter this, this area, the painters, the painter area tells the drivers of the trucks that that's something, they have to start to look there, you know.
Right, be careful, be conscious.
Right, the safety.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
You're good.
Okay, you're good.
Yeah, yeah, so. I know, that's what I just told a tiny man, I didn't know that. That people were walking through, like, the bushes.
Yeah.
No, the parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And not feel like they're, you know. A truck that come.
Traffic.
Truck that's coming out.
There is no. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
It's eighty-eight, assessing both, but the warning strips.
What the problem is, is it's eating, assessing, so as far as you're going.
Yeah, you know, it's got a sign in the middle of it.
Oh, that's, that's really great.
So it's not, it's not A G A, it's assessing, it's a sign in the middle of it.
I think you can get by there, because.
It looks like that sign.
Is there really a sign right in the middle of the sidewalk?
Um, yeah, well, one third. Instead of a two.
Now, that, that, I would, there's, but in after, because you really do have to make all your sidewalks, get any kind of something.
Yeah, so you may have to move that sign.
Yeah, whose sign is it?
It's a speed sign, so, so.
They relocated, we should relocate it somewhere near an office.
Yeah, we may want to relocate it.
Okay, we'll get it.
I know there was some discussion that took place about additions to be made to the plan that I didn't catch. I can't hear, I can't hear. Sorry.
Okay, so, or you can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I think on the first meeting where they showed the, the plan of, say, existing conditions. I could be wrong, but it didn't seem to illustrate the existing sidewalk from Heavenly Donuts to the property sixty-six. There's a, there's a good sidewalk in place, as we've just learned from street, from Google Street. There's a, there's a speed sign right in the middle of the sidewalk. But it's a good sidewalk, has ramps on both ends and all that. So that, in my opinion, just fine. That's, but that would suffice where I was trying to get a more safe access from one place to the other, which I wasn't seeing previously. So I'm good, because it already exists. We can address the sign though.
Uh, go into it.
I know.
And my concern was getting to that sidewalk from another location on the property. That there, that anybody that's going to, because it's a big, it's a big wide open entranceway there. So that painting a, a couple of stripes there just to delineate a crosswalk kind of location. So that when all trucks, everybody comes in and comes out, they know that somebody could be in that crosswalk.
So that, that driveway, the one in front of, the first driveway is going to be narrowed. And the other driveway, we still have a, it'll be wider, wider maybe than the first driveway. Because we don't, we don't intend on any public access there. It's only for those trucks exiting. Um, but it won't be like it shows now. And I think right now, there isn't any, because it's just a free for all, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think it is. You can see that on there, right?
Just a little safety, just a little safety thing is all.
Right, yep, a little of that. Well, we'll look into the sign too.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I guess it's one power property, so we don't, we.
It looks like, it looks like if you could move the sign, it might be eighty-eight flying. I don't know, it looks.
Well, if it has, if it has those grumbles and it has like the ramps on each side, it would.
Well, that, I think what I need is necessary.
But, Jim, and one other thing. So, and looking at the plan too, so now I'm in the plan.
Sure.
Um, it, it does show still that, that kind of urban edge of the island. As you know, if you look at the aerial or, or even go by there, it's all eroded and opened up. So I, I would ask that they at least go Cape Cod, Berman, or just Berman, yeah, just of the island. They show curve on the other side of it, on the, which one, orientation, yeah? On the, on the east side of it, but not on the, on the west, where we're talking about that throat right there. Yep, absolutely. Zoom in on it. So Danielle, we're talking about the island right in the front.
Yeah, it's the one that's right, abuts the right of way. Oh, sure, we were going to, we were going to add Cape Cod, because you guys had asked about that and I just didn't have new plans to, so in here.
See right here and see how much it's eroded.
Yeah, I'm not even surprised.
Yeah.
Nope, we'll fix that, absolutely.
So two-seven, we're good at, good, two-seven, the note on two-seven on G O two, and that, you know, sidewalk requirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're going to ask for an extension?
Yeah, and is everybody agreed on traffic impact assessment? Are we okay?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think so. I think that there's such a, there's such a. And it's only a couple hundred feet from the light, you know, so it's not like, yeah.
And I always have to ask for the wait for a second here.
Yeah, it's not like people are going to be speeding right there.
Pretty hard to do it.
Yeah.
Um, no, so it's like, yes, we are going to be seeking continuance till the next meeting. When is that?
September nineteen.
September nineteen? Wants to stand for that. G two needs, I think we can do that, September nineteen, okay. Because he needs about a week, and if I give it to you, okay. And do you think, I don't know, is it possible to have a draft decision for the board at that point, or is the board? Are you okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. My client is very happy. He has, he has to get out of this smaller locations. Nail like, is always the case. I know, you hear that all the time.
Yeah.
I know, okay.
It's a real thing.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, so September nineteen.
Very good, thank you.
Continuing.
Motion. Brian, Brian.
Spears, I move the community planning commission vote to continue the public hearing for sixty-six Winter Street until Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
When do we want to schedule that one? Do you want it at eight o'clock?
Eight P M.
He said.
Second half.
Okay, we'll move into the second.
Nice.
Um, any further discussion? All right, Jeremiah, how see you?
Hi.
And Ryan.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dave.
Hi.
And Jeff, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Reagan, so I have a favor to ask.
Is that ending?
Hey, uh, Steve, so next up, we have seventeen Anthony.
Good evening. Do you have, we belong to Civil Design Consultants representing the applicant. Uh, we're just here to give you a brief update and we'll also be requesting continuance of the September nineteenth meeting after that. But since we last met, we just made a handful of plan revisions, which we've addressed in an August thirteenth letter. That was sent to both the commission and G M two for review. Uh, it had a couple of comments that G M two had. Uh, one being directing a little more flow to the wetland that's located on the site, made that revision at their request. And then also, uh, the pipe over connection going down into Anthony Road, they requested be a twelve inch pipe, we made that change. So we've got a review letter back from them, that's all clean, no more comments for them. The other couple of comments were the water department comments that we discussed in the last hearing, we made those changes. Uh, that involved a few nodes for the hydrant connections. Uh, and then also having the water service shut offs be one foot behind the right of way line. Uh, we've done all that, and those were the only changes that we made between now and then. Uh, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but otherwise, that's my update.
Yeah, the twelve inch pipe that you, is that you're replacing the ten inch pipe?
No, this is on the site going down the closed road.
Okay.
Uh, and then connecting down Anthony Road.
Right.
Yeah, so we were proposing a fifteen through there, uh, but where we're connecting in has a twelve. And then a ten, I believe, goes, or a ten and a twelve.
Goes to a ten down there.
Yeah, there is a ten somewhere in there, a couple hundred feet of it. Uh, we're not proposing to replace that currently, but, uh, what G M two has suggested, since that's the restriction and not our pipe upstream, was that we reduce that from a fifteen inch to a twelve inch, because it doesn't make a difference when the downstream connection is the one that's restricting those.
Yeah. So perhaps the thought process, if we can slow down what we're getting there, you wouldn't have a backup facility on that ten inch?
Perhaps, yeah.
Or it'd take longer for the problem to develop. Well, they just, that was just a recommendation. They didn't give any verdict on it?
Uh, I don't have their review letter with me, but, um, that, yeah, that was a recommendation that they made, was to go from the fifteen to twelve.
Yeah, I think I can see why they did that, but I would like to hear their reasons on it, that's why. Okay, is there any?
For an open question, the ten inch pipe that's connected to this. Or is quality, right? Um, how far, I'm sorry, how far does that go for it actually?
Into the backside?
Yep.
Well, a hundred feet?
It was ten hundred and two hundred, but a little more than two hundred feet.
And where does it, it exits?
It goes into another cap basin, that eventually goes down, um, I forget the name of the street, but it goes down in Peter Road. And so it's one section of ten inch in there.
Right.
And not really sure why, there's a twelve before it and is either a twelve or a fifteen after it, but it looks there.
Your only question is over time. Um, so going forward, you're, um. What are you still working on that forward here?
Uh, we don't have any plan revisions to make. Basically, what we're looking for, uh, what we needed was a clearer review letter from G M two. And I believe we need a recommendation from the commission for the conservation of the mission, so that they can close it here, right?
Right.
Because previously, when we had been going to conservation, they wouldn't close until, uh, this commission had issued the decision. But since then, the process changed a bit. Now we're waiting for, uh, conservation commission, which we have here in next week with them.
Yeah. A little bit of a chicken and egg thing.
It's not necessarily, you know, the concomitant recommendation. What the concomitant really needed from the C P C was to know that our period of need was concluded. Um, we got a G M, a letter from G M two, letter stating that from there, all of the stormwater related issues have been resolved with the plan updates. Um, so with the recommendations that they made for special provisions, um, they were, they felt the plan was compliant. So that's more what the concomitant waits for from us. Um, so I did forward that last letter to, um, the conservation agent and let them know that, um, the C P C would be waiting for the conservation permission to make their, their, their decision. And the conservation agent felt that that would be fine, but, um, without this question.
Okay. So, um, there are no other, um, other than the stormwater issues, there are no other conditions that G M two is looking at?
The conditions were even worse than our last hearing, even with the letter, um, they are.
In other words, they review all the plans that finds no other fall or certain.
Right, right. So they have given us the letters saying all issues have been addressed. They have five recommended permissions. Some of them are related to stormwater and some are not. Um, but things, things like, um, the first one is, uh, the requirement to, um, do a complete mill and overlay. Um, because this is a newer road that they'll be cutting into, um. Notification of the town when the basins are under construction, um, and then they're completed for inspection, um, which we would require anyway, but they just want to be very sure. Um, and James was there to inspect that, um. They're giving us some recommendations for the frequency of, of the forest solution required from homeowners association to, um, be given to the town until the town owns, um, those structures. Um, that until the site is fully stabilized, protection measures have to be implemented to ensure no settlement goes into those infiltration basins, such as self-sacs, um, erosion control barriers. And then, um, they need notice, the D P W to be present when the drainage connection work is complete into the Anthony Road catch basin. And just putting in the condition to say that the contractor would be responsible for any damage to the town. So those are just five conditions that they provided them.
Did you, uh, did you include, yeah, the milling and repaving, because all the roads have just been done?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I have to check and see if, I believe we have a note on the plan, but I have to double check that. If it's not on the plan, then we can definitely add it.
Okay, please do.
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to see that restored, it was a good condition that it's in right now. Uh, it was quite good right now.
Do the waivers fall under the, I guess, the request for conservation of being all inclusive? We're happy with G M two's review? I mean, do the waivers, are the waivers included in that list?
No. Okay, no, they, they were low on waivers. But it sounds like we got everything the conservation needs to complete there.
Right, and the only reason they wait on the C P C is because they don't do their own here review to ensure compliance with stormwater regulations, and they know that we do. So we give it an hour.
And so then, what will happen is, if they give their approval, then they can bring it back to us and we can do our finish hours, but then, yeah. Because they may make changes, they require changes and won't be the first time. All right. Okay, um, this is public hearing, so I'd open it up to the public unless the board has any questions. Do you guys have that connected?
The only, the only thing I just wanted to make, sorry. Sorry about that, Jim. Um, in the, in the recent September first letter from G M two, they do address the two butter letters. And I think there's a couple of people in the audience, the fifteen Anthony Road, is that Andrea?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, so they, if you want to read that, I don't know, have you read it?
I did see it.
Okay, so you've seen that. And then the same number two is nineteen Mohawk, which I remember is Michelle. Forgive me, I didn't have the last. Nineteen, which is Michelle. Um, oh, she's on, I'm trying. Someone waving their hand. Oh, hi, Michelle. You can go on, you just want.
Yes, okay, no problem.
Did you read the comments from the letter, the September first letter?
I did not, but I do believe my attorney did take a look at that, that information.
Okay. And there's another one too, forty-six Hable Street. I know this, that's more conservation. I just wanted to just declare in the letter that some of the people in the audience might be wondering if those were addressed by G M two.
Yeah, yeah, twenty-six.
Yeah. Have you, which one is that then? Luke, did you read the comments, or it's just the one statement in the letter?
Uh, I did see, I did. I didn't see the letter till, uh, this morning. We did have a chance to review it quickly. Thank you for asking. Um, so, so I'm aware of the comments that have come back from the peer reviewer. I, I, I do have a few comments. I'm happy to save them. I, I understand this is going to be continued for another night. So if the commission would rather I hold my comments till the last night of hearing, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Well, there will be the nineteenth, so if you're comfortable waiting till the nineteenth, we can do that.
That, that's fine. I'm happy to hold my, hold my comments. And I may well have a couple extras by that time.
Yeah, well, yeah, especially if there's something concerning conservation, it'll give you an opportunity to see how that pays out too. Okay, thank you.
One question to Mr. Ramos, pointing to the comments in the nine-one letter. The one from nineteen Mohawk, the archipelotical overlay district, G M A states it doesn't be, I'm sorry, G O two, doesn't meet the fifteen percent threshold. What is the, what is it?
Um, it's at, I believe, six point six percent.
Okay, so it's a six point six.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll open it to the public, please, the director, your, we say your name and address, or we ask a question and run your question through the chair. So anybody have any questions on what we've done tonight, yes?
Yeah, I saw one question, uh, Jeff Jones, sixteen Anthony Road.
Yep.
Um, if you could just, uh, the engineer, if you could just explain a little more, it sounded like there was a change in the last plan where, if I understood you, the less water coming to Anthony Road and more going into the wetland, the W dip.
Yeah, that's correct.
So does that mean less water coming from that basin down the current seventeen Anthony Road way? Or, or the other one between, I guess, it would be between nineteen and twenty-one.
Which is.
Spruce, spruce road side, or the?
Um, yes, it's less going down into Anthony Road and then that goes out towards, uh, that drainage goes out towards Hable Street.
Okay, so it's probably less water coming from the current seventeen Anthony Road down.
Correct.
And then going back up the street towards here.
Correct.
And more going to the other basin and then to the level?
Uh, yes, exactly, the wetland side, yeah.
Okay. And, um, again, we'll be back on the nineteenth. Everybody else have a question to know tonight?
Forty-six Hable Street, just a follow-up to that. So, uh, what is actually part in that drain on Anthony Road? At what point, when rainfall hits, where will that start coming in? Everything below the two detention cones?
Um, so we're tying in, um, structures from the site into the.
We're tying in, um, structures from the site into the Anthony Road drainage system. So there'll be overflow from the drainage ponds that are on our site, they go in there as well as, um. Anything from. Uh, I believe it's ten to three hundred feet of the roadway, it'll sheet go down and just gets captured in that basin. Goes into, uh, uh, hydro nine M separator manhole and then goes out into Anthony Road.
So that goes into Anthony Road, which then flows to the back of Peter Road into wetlands.
Yep, and, and normally as a great amount of that water would just go into the ground on the site. Um, there's some ground off from the site, some goes into the ground, some runs off the site.
So, so you are taking water that would more be left on the site and diverting it out onto the property?
Um, there's a portion, yeah, but we're meeting the, uh, refineries, there's more on handbook, so. To do that, we have to meet the peak rates that are coming off the site, so that's what we're doing.
I would just note that this water slides in wetlands behind people's homes. On Peter Road, um, and they are diverting water on the site. Directly into wetlands that are in people's properties on Peter Road, which most of them don't even know about. Because they're out of waters, they never had any water.
Was there a? I think it was conservation, was there a concern about starting with wetland?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Those wetlands would disappear, we didn't, there needs to be enough water to keep them vibrant.
Yeah, that was a concern of the wetland we had on site, um, so what we did is we matched the two-year. Volume and rate that's going there, um, volumes that are going to the wetland on site are here produced.
Any other comments or questions?
Again, one other, just one other thing, um. You know, as I look at everything, you know, I've read the reports, all this still comes down to the waivers, especially the first waiver. Which is a looped water line, um. This whole project falls apart if that is not rented. Five hundred feet is the town code. They're asking for an unlinked water line for eight hundred and thirteen feet. If you read the request for the waiver, it's because of cost. Cost. Health and safety, not only my family, but every other family in this room should not come down. So when you think about it. When you're going to vote on this, just know that you're voting between the health and safety of my family, all the waters. And the wallet and the bank account, but you're not one of them. That's what this comes down to, the entire project. That's what this went down to. They, they've developed the property in court. There's a, there's a way to go up to April Street. They, they knew. When they built my house and knew when they built my neighbor's house. That they were eventually going to have the looped water. They let the strip of land out to April Street for that very reason. It's expensive, if you don't want to do it, I get that, but that's not my fault. We always talk about the owner's right to develop land. I was totally on board with that. As long as it's by the rules, and guess what? They've already developed the land, more than once, more than twice. Right? This is a self-imposed problem. Their cost should not impact my family. Or anyone else's. That's what you're voting on here today. And if cost isn't a measure, then that liability goes back on the town if you approve it.
Essentially, what we, we do check with the water, we do talk to the water department about their recommendations that we. And, uh, since they're the ones that maintain the system, we tend to take their recommendations seriously. We have had situations where they said, doesn't make any sense, but it gets us nothing. Provides no, no, no guarantees, gives nothing, so they say. Throw a water main in on one of the streets off of Central Street that needs a water main instead. Where they, this place the money into something that helped a bunch of families that didn't have any water. Uh, and had oil wells that have been failing, so, I mean, we've been some. Um. Arrangements like that made up within the past. So, I mean, that. So we asked the water department, give us a recommendation on whether they think this is actually valuable, whether that does provide any health and safety. But they're the experts. We continue to do better.
And, uh, if I just add to that, um. From Danielle's memo on August thirty first, that's actually in there, uh, following up with Matt Prince from the. Water Department, and it says the water department did not see a way for the water to be moved in a manner that could substantially improve pressure or quality. They did not have concerns about the CDC issuing the waiver, so long as their recommendation was taken that the hydrant be placed at the end of the water main. To allow flushing beyond the last home, which we did incorporate that.
That's also because they never proposed a possible line down the April Street. The only thing they ever talked about in their waiver request was between thirty-one and thirty-three Anthony Road on Peter Street, which they don't even have access to. They never proposed it. They never proposed it.
Yeah.
Because it's more expensive.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Andrea, value goes fifteen, Anthony Road. I'm just wondering if the comments from the water department, DPW, all these other departments that are used. If they're part of the public record, I haven't been able to locate them, maybe I just haven't found them correctly. Um, is there something in writing from the water department?
They just read it.
What, I'm sorry?
He just read it.
So is it on the public record?
It's on the share file.
Oh.
I'll just, I'll just want to clarify, so the water department didn't give me this information in the memo. That was from me sitting down and taking verbally what they, what their recommendation was. They've given us now before, um, about this project, but with regard to the recommendation on the looping, um, that was the result of the meeting. And that was me, um, noting it down and submitting that to the CPC, not them giving me a memo. Um, some of the other comments in here were a result of memos that were given to us and where they were, they have been placed into the chat.
Here, we'll perhaps we can clarify it by next, uh.
I, I did ask for a written memo. I, do, would we need a written memo in order to?
Just.
Do the waiver, okay, then that's it all?
Is that, I'm sorry, is that DPW as well, or is the water department part of DPW, that they had owner review?
Yeah, the water department has their, uh, has their own people, but they are part of the DPW, but they are a separate department.
Okay.
They actually have a separate funding source and everything, money that goes into it to, to take care of wells and take care of the water tower and things like that.
But this, but this DPW, but this DPW discussion encompasses.
I'm sorry, sorry, you have to say your name.
Uh, sorry, Jeff Jones, sixty Anthony Road. So just to clarify your discussion with the water department. Is that the water department or is that the water department in, I mean, the DPW being the water department Wayne or is it somebody in the DPW? Have you talked with the company with the water department that they're input or?
Our, so our, our DPW has, um, different divisions, um, town engineers one, um. The water department is another, um, the water superintendent reports to the director of DPW, but they are, um, they have their own. Uh, commentary in this process, um, the departments that are contacted for comment, um, don't include the DPW director. Who would take comments if he wanted to give us some, but the comments that the CPC is required to collect, um, are from, uh, a number of. Departments, including those two divisions within DPW, engineering and water.
Good.
Okay, yes.
Fran Hatch, you said when I was challenging. You have other departments that are supposed to issue reports, like the fire department, the police department, have you been there?
Yeah, we have all of them, yeah. Yeah, they've been, they did all, they did.
Are those part of the public records that you look at?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah. They've been, actually, they were done a while ago, so they've been in that public record for a while. Yes, they've been, they've been in the public records for a while. They were done in Colorado, so. They are, they're definitely there.
And where are the, where are the comments?
Um. We can pull them up and read them off there if you want, but they, they don't make any. If they had any issues, they were turned over to the engineer and they were incorporated into the plan.
Well, Lauren, the subdivision control law was enacted back in the fifties. Under the provisions of the subdivision control law, you have the local planning boards. That come up with the rules and regulations and the, the things that are required for development. The R and I is for the current. At their current end place. The board on by town meeting. And my question is, why would you grant waiver for something that? So engineers and fire departments and safety officers have, have put it as being impactful. And just grant a waiver, I don't quite understand.
The process is put in place for, to address situations, if, 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 if what you were saying was going to be absolutely true, you'd only need one member on this board. There was. There are. If what you're saying was true, you would only need one member on the board. Instead, there are five, that's so that decisions can be made. Uh, based on the.
It should be made for the benefit of the town and the people that are abutting the development. Not for the developer.
I don't think that's how it works. We don't make this based on the development. We make sure that the developer follows the rules and, and.
But the rules and regulations are there for a reason.
Yes. But so are the thing people like the water superintendents, the town engineer, all those people are in place also for a reason.
And if things have changed, you can petition town meeting to change the. I haven't seen that happen.
Well, I don't think there are changes that we're. Putting out, yes, ma'am.
I have the, um, fire department comments, I, I can read it.
Sure.
Wait. Um, okay, this is from Deputy Chief Barry Galvin, uh. Date of January third, twenty twenty-three. The fire department has reviewed the proposed subdivision plan for seventeen Anthony Road. We have the following requests. One, any street signs need to be installed on the dirt. Two, engineering needs to ensure that the street and any cul-de-sac meets the turning radius needs of our largest apparatus. Three, fire hydrant spacing no more than five hundred feet with one in the cul-de-sac. Four, water mains must be in service before any construction. Five, steamer connections on all hydrants must be at least twenty-four inches above finished grade. Six, flow tests must be performed immediately after installation. Seven, actual placement and construction requirements for hydrants shall be determined by the North Red and Water Department. Eight, driveway, she'll have a twelve-foot wide drivable surface with a two-foot shoulder or clear zone on each side of the driveway. Sixteen-foot clearance overall, driveway maximum grade of ten percent. Adequate turnarounds must be provided if over five hundred feet in length. Driveways shall have an unobstructed vertical clearance of thirteen feet, six inches. Nine, one bridge or culvert is required to be used as part of the driveway access. It shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with nationally recognized standards. The bridge or culvert shall be designed for a live load sufficient to carry the impervious load of fire apparatus. These overload limits shall be posted at the entrance to any bridge. Any questions or concerns may be directed to Deputy Chief Galvin and he leaves his phone number in. Let's leave, send it to that. January third, twenty twenty-three. And that's available in the opening meeting, share file goes on our website. It's February twenty eighth was the day of that meeting. And when we got our, um, first initial round memos from the departments. Engineering, um, water. Conservation. Um. Uh, traffic safety. Um, and that was the first question.
Oh, yeah, so they, they, all those reports have been in there for quite a while, so that was January, if you heard. Been there since January.
That the updated plans can review by each department because that's based on the private.
Well, we're still, I was actually still working on the plan right now, but any of all of the things that they put into their. Requests are included in the current plan. Most of that is boilerplate stuff, that they pretty much always say a lot of the same things.
Dave Cook again, um, is it possible to have the water department, uh, be made aware of the option to loop into April Street?
I, I think they, they probably reviewed the whole thing, but we're going to ask them for a rich comment, so.
Just because on the waiver request, the only option that was proposed other than a single main. Was down thirty-one, thirty-three Anthony, and I could certainly understand why maybe that, uh, was seen as maybe redundant. Um, but I'm just curious if they would change their tune if they knew that there was an option to go up the April Street.
We can certainly present that.
I'll ask them to look at that. I'm assuming they know.
I think they know about it.
The options that are on the ground, I, but I, I'll ask them to look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then I'm going to, uh, um, we're going to do an extension for this and, uh.
I'm just curious, um. When we talked about, I'm going to go back a little bit, Bill, and then go back to, uh, pipeline size. So I know, like, everybody, their concern is water runoff. Get it out of my neighborhood and roll on into the natural, um, and. So you guys decided. GM two to reduce from fifteen to twelve, correct?
Yep.
Okay, because it goes into a ten. And the ten, ten inch pipe travels. Approximately a little less than two hundred feet.
A little more, yeah.
A little more than two hundred feet. So I have a question, if that pipe, that two hundred feet of pipe was increased. Twelve inch to meet the same size piping to development. Is there any way we could tell like what the impact of that is, or is that? So, because I, you know, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, um. Yeah, I, I have that model done, um, so I could look at that pretty quickly.
Because I know, like, you know, they, people have expressed, you know, move that water incorrectly. And I understand concerns and, and my mind, my thought process is. Big pipes, small pipe, big pipe, and, you know, I always think, well, down the road, if that two hundred foot stretch of pipe was all twelve inch. Then, you know, I would imagine or think that it would be a much more peaceful mindset for people who live there. For that runoff, for that section of the project, because that's a lot. You know, increase that pipeline, um, from ten inch to twelve inch. For that additional footage. And, and again, I'm just throwing this idea out there and maybe just, if you do have a model, I would love to see it. Would this just impact the copper another inch, you know?
Yeah.
So on the waiver?
Yep.
Just another inch.
Well, it's a right.
But, but right, as far as that's, that's the reason you need that waiver, right?
Uh, there's, there's a couple of proposed pipes. It's partly because of the existing condition of Anthony Road, because. Where we're tying in, there's not much to cover there, so the two, uh, drainage pipes down at the entrance, we can't. Get those any lower, it's a little slow, um, but then help us the cul-de-sac, we're requesting a waiver there because. We have them on the interior of the cul-de-sac and that's not really a high traffic area. And it was still more than the manufacturer's specification, so to bring that fill down a little bit is why we're requesting that one.
Okay, so it's kind of too far.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps, that helps. Well, it does in a way, um, and I get that, I understand, you know, all that stuff, the heights and all that, but my, my thought was. If that pipe was increased to twelve inch, does that change the entire model? So instead of, yeah, because now if you're, you know, moving water, a portion of water this way now with that twelve inch all the way out to two hundred feet. Now we can move a lot more water in a different direction to suffice, because now you have a much larger pipe, because the calculation was done in the ten inch pipe.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying, so like, if we're sending water there now and it backs up with a ten inch pipe for a, a ten-year storm, say. If it becomes a twelve, is it now a twenty-five year storm?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if, if that increase, if that two hundred foot stretch of pipe was increased to twelve. That kind of seemed like in my mind, just the math of it. Would probably give you more options to move other waters on site into that as well. Because that's, that's a big, for, that's a big difference. Ten and twelve inch pipe, twelve inch pipe, you move a lot of water, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something that you guys have considered maybe to, to. You know. Find, find that solution to move a lot more water in a different direction, maybe. I, I, I don't know what the model is on that. You know, I really, I've read a lot of this stuff, but that's just something that's been kicking. You know, I really, I read a lot of this stuff, but that's just something that's been kicking around in my thought process.
Okay, yeah.
You know, maybe you consider upgrading that pipe the entire length.
Will, have you actually gone and checked that that I know you you went to the beginning of that ten inch, but you looked at it all the way through or?
Yeah.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
That section's on Richard, correct?
Um. If, ah, is Richard the one that's closer there? Yeah, yeah. And that's what it goes down.
Bill has camera the the line?
We did not camera them. We popped open all the uh covers and measured them.
Okay.
Yes, I'm still with twenty four Anthony Road. My question on that two hundred foot pipe, you know what very actually ends? Uh, because I, there is wetlands on the press line between Anthony Road and Peter Road. Which my understanding that there's some kind of drainage system coming Anthony Road that picks up behind these four back yards. Twenty four Anthony Road, twenty two Anthony Road, twenty one and twenty three Peter. Water pools there, picked up again and then goes up to Peter Road. So if you're putting water into an infrastructure that's sixty years old, you're adding stuff to it. Um, I I know for a fact because the DPW cleaned out that area. Twenty years ago and Mr. Victor lived here before the two houses were built. And my neighbors beside me at twenty two Anthony Road. And Mo was one who told us that there was this drainage system going on, so I'm wondering if this is all connected somehow and. You know, he's looking, he's looking at the manual covers, but there's a might be other stuff going on in the other. Unless the DPW is aware and has maintained that in the past. They should find out what's going on too.
So that system, uh, the culvert that's between, I believe, twenty one and twenty three Anthony, uh. That's actually a separate closed drainage system that goes.
I want to talk about Peter Road.
Okay.
This is, this is.
I'm not sure.
Right, there's an area between Anthony Road and Peter Road where it's hopefully wetting out. And what my understanding is water comes in from Anthony Road under the, let it sit there for a while. Gets picked up again and then goes up to under Peter Road. Whether it goes to the Fitch River or who knows?
Um, there's two outlets that go to Peter Road from Anthony Road. There's um. Cause I believe it's between twenty one and twenty three Anthony is a a drainage culvert in the yard that connects. Yeah, connects into a drainage system that goes to the west and then down aside street across Peter. And then the other system that we're tying into goes to the east down Richard and.
So you know, it pops up in another area. That's right. It may not go directly to all the. The culverts and sewer systems in Peter Road. I'm suggesting it may be coming up in in wetland areas in between. That's on.
They're running backyards, he's referring to, it's a west pressure drill. So they're heading to Peter from Anthony, and you're right hand side between the. Two houses on Anthony and two houses on Peter. That strip in between is where you're going to.
Okay, yeah, there there is an outlet that comes out. It goes between two houses that are on Peter Road and goes into the wetlands that are behind Peter Road. Um, what address is it between? I'm not sure.
This is between Anthony and Peter we're talking about though.
Yeah, yeah, as far as I know, there's nothing that goes out between Anthony and Peter. It all goes further to the south.
Okay, so what happens to water between the two rows of houses?
Um, so it gets collected up uh in Anthony Road, goes down. South down Richard and then it goes back west. And eventually terminates in a uh clear end that's at the end of uh behind Peter Road to the south of Peter Road.
But when those yards meet between the two roads, is that kind of like? The non-vision is correct. It's almost like a swale. Anthony Road houses back up to Peter Road.
Right, yeah.
Is there any drainage that takes care of surface?
I'm not sure.
But what you're talking about with the pipes that we're talking about here is also going on a lot of in a closed system that. Those two pipes the whole time.
Yeah.
So it's not feeding that area?
No.
But we're on track. Be interested to know what if any.
There's no connection that we saw when we opened the manholes catch basins.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's something surfaced that goes into the catch basin, but.
Yes, there's no overflow.
Not that we witness.
Oh, thank you. It's been up for a little while. Steven Corsetti, eleven Anthony Road. Um, one question, has have we heard back from National Grid on their approval? And secondly, the stormwater discussion, if anyone was in the neighborhood the last two storms. They would have seen that the system cannot handle these, and I'm using air quotes, one hundred year storms that are more frequent now. They were, the water was coming out like geysers out of the storm drains. On the western end of Anthony and Peter, so the system cannot handle. Current storms, and if we add more water to the system, we're gonna continue to have issues with people's homes. Septic systems. And so on and so forth, so just please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Um, so have we, as we discussed in previous hearings, um, regarding the stormwater system. Uh, I believe that it's currently overflowing for the ten year storm. And we're not exacerbating that issue and GM two has reviewed that and they agree with that. Uh, National Grid, they've been waiting for approved plans that they want and endorsed and reported plans that before they will issue their decision, so.
Still waiting on that.
Yeah.
Yes, man.
You have a an engineer that reviewed the calculations that were included. Did the engineer agree that there was no need for the runoff?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Your your question was, did the engineer agree that there was no change in the rate of runoff? Based on the design instead of. The peer review engineer did agree. Okay, any other questions? We will, um. I'm an extension for this, we have a we have a notion there. Does it earlier? Now, meeting the public hearing open, uh, so they can give you the ass pressure. Eight thirty.
Fifteen or eight thirty, I guess it depends whether we have a continuous from sixty six winter. They they may continue, so if they do, then maybe fifteen makes sense.
Mr. Pierce, I'm going to give the blank mission, go to grant request extension time, which is to render a decision on seventeen Anthony Road and. Depending on the subdivision, whether it's September thirtieth, September thirty, and so can you continue the public hearing since September nineteenth, nineteen twenty three.
Second motion, my second, but just a little. Um. So all in favor, um. Jeremiah?
Aye.
Right, I myself, I agree. We're in a show fight in favor, no opponent, we're continuing. Thank you all very much, mine.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought that it's extended to the nine thirty or nine nineteen. Danielle, is the meeting scheduled for nine thirty or nine nineteen?
The meeting is scheduled to September nineteenth. The time is eight fifteen P M.
Okay, sorry, I thought I heard uh nine um nine thirty, September thirtieth, not nine nineteen. Okay, thank you.
I thought she said something.
And I'm just summarization. That made a lot of sense to me. What is completely.
I did, I did. Jeremiah, what else?
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Okay, but as far as you're concerned, all of this, well, what we're gonna address.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm digging the ground anyway. They're planning on replacing three days.
Yeah, not that section, not that.
And I don't think if. Every single time we do this, people worry that it's gonna worse. And every single time.
Right.
But they never come back to the meeting and say, thank you very much. I have it anywhere in my basement now in six years.
I agree.
So they don't, they don't come back, so you have to.
I know, I I kind of put that out there just to like a peace of mind.
I'm gonna sell Warren Pierce in piñatas, so. No, I tell the public. Right, I'm gonna get a nice Warren Pierce one. With that stick and everything.
I have to say.
They're hanging big fat, so you can just. I'll get to taking tree and start it.
Started asking them, like, well, where's the groundwater? It's like, oh, it's like twenty five, twenty six inches below the slab. They run nonstop, but they said. Have you ever considered that that's just the groundwater runoff? You're just like, you're like trying to drain the ocean right now.
It is kind of what I think is happening down there in a lot of places, like even on Dwayne Drive on our, on one side of Dwayne Drive is is in the swamp kinda. So they put their foundations in and every single person has, you know, a a sump running twenty four hours. It's like, it's just as you said, you're fighting hyperstatic pressure that's above the level of your sump, you know. You're just gonna.
Possible task.
It's uh, yeah, and then it gets charged, more pressure that is when you get a rain event, right?
Right.
So the pressure increases and you get higher flow and. But, yeah, I I know, it's it's hard though, right? You know, it's towards point. One, one has a bad situation in their neighborhood, they just perceive this or any kind of development is just making it worse. I I'd be right on board with that in some extent until I saw like real logic and engineering and. You know, and I'm hoping we're seeing that, and I think we're. I think I think what we need to do, Danielles too, is just be in line with um the reports, like the letters we're getting from, yeah, what we're hearing is. So they're in alignment or recent or updated to reflect the very latest plan that. That Bill has submitted, not that that always needs to be, but I mean, on the sense a little bit where it has to do with water and. You might want to just. No.
There shouldn't be any water, there shouldn't be any water at all in any of the houses on Dwayne Drive. My drive, any one of those like, unless. Unless they ignore the engineers.
Yeah, I don't know why, but there is, you know, on the ones where.
He was done, a water table was charming and the house should have been built above it.
Cool. You'll remember, I think a few years back, but Danielle, just um, I think so, for instance, I'll try to give an example. Cause I'm like you, I'm like going back in the folders trying to find like you found the one from January. I'm like, where's the fire one, you know?
Oh, there's an easier way to do it.
What do you do?
Projects under review, I should, I should just.
I didn't even know this, so.
Okay, so on the C P C website.
Got it.
We have a tab on the navigation where it's presence under review. Everything as current is on that page and so. Now.
Yeah, I never do that. I'm on my second term. Yeah, 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 let me ask a question.
Ever hold a your share file?
Yeah.
Device, that's where you can go because it's all there. Um.
God, I'll ask you. So, all right, so here's a question, now now that you schooled me on that, um. But say on the water line to to Dave, his point, um, his Dave over here is. So they look at it and DPW looked at it or Water Park looked at it in the context of. Putting paths in for these two house lots, you know, or easement or whatever. Do they look at it, I guess you're saying, with with was the formerly proposed easement or something, you know, it just makes you wonder like, is. I guess when if they're if they're like commenting, because they made the comment, we're cool with the dead end, um. We don't see any value of quality or whatever, um, given in the proposed location of where it was. Enclosed between, was it thirty two and thirty four, I wanna say. Um, and then, but what he's raising is a the original proposal was to bring it down and ease it back to April. When you put it in that context, what is the body of our aesthetic?
So I'm thinking this is right, but I think what your times came to me was that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily disagreeing, but I'm just being too satisfied. Yeah, cause you you can sell more warranty, like months of warranty. If anything happens, it's more involved. That's why, again, I'll sell tons of piñatas, like more fierce piñatas. I was gonna be, what you just said is inside, there'd be firecrackers when they break it open. Probably kids will kind of run in this, like the eighties and everything in there, so. Yeah, but like, right, keeping with your uh your business. I didn't look, so because I shut the, is it on the right hand side?
Yeah, it's on the page bar. It's products and reviews. So what what it is, is if everything that is every plan iteration. Um, it's not every single piece of correspondence we get from every partner, but it's all the major stuff that the engineer.
Yeah.
Or it's the department memos, um, the legal notices, that the main stuff is all there. Now, all of that is again. Copy, if you go to the um. The meeting packet materials, that's the other place, but you have to search for main, and it's just like your share file. It doesn't really help you. I was trying to demonstrate where it is, but.
So to Dave's point, because I don't think we'll. Take the final plans and send it back to Fire Bonds and here's your original letter. Here's the final plans, just confirm, like, see, you say, say something, say. Are there seven conditions?
Any department can use this comment, but you always don't get my contact on the. I go back to them and I say, this is the revised plan, this was your letter, any comments all been addressed. And then they say, yeah, or they may say, you know, or maybe the kind of thing that they, all they do. I go back to them and I say, this is the revised plan, this was your letter, I can comment all that at best, and then they say, yeah, or they may say, you know, or maybe the kind of thing that they, all they do.
We hear you know that.
We're talking about our department, all of our.
The only, the only value.
It's not into your decision, it may come to you, but you don't want to. You just make sure that those hydrants are. And that's something. You're looking at. Like the. Every, um.
If you were on empty growth, already had.
In some way.
That we got you, so. So there was.
And we just bubbled that back up.
We should have. For the last. Peter wrote, I'm just, so everyone I looked at, he's like, oh, I'm putting on.
Yeah, been. Like seven, eight months.
They're hardly speaking on it.
So.
Or they did.
Senator just seems to be like, for every little, here's, I was just telling myself, I just, I was texting Jamie Lynch. John.
Still have.
For. Cape Cod burn. It's like. But I spent eleven dollars for Cape Cod burn. So that's, that's one of the ways, so not on the waterline one, but that's one of those ones where I can't know, I am, like.
I'm like.
On with, in general, allowing, because the. I don't. This is currently developed, and, you know.
They just, we give, so we do an empty growth. So we give both of those growth. Everything, sidewalk, everything.
In grand.
All grand new, no, no.
That's what I'm saying. So I think that's, that's where we could, I mean, to offset, was it Brian's point, you know, like, and I'm talking like, just like little small things, but they're little warrants or whatever, it's, I think we, we should help subdivision law a little bit, to help people. What they don't understand is helping the developer, but it ultimately helps you buy a house or the town afford to maintain or whatever, but I, I definitely want granite on corners.
Yeah.
You know, like, you know, with that or getting ground by a snowplow, whatever, erosion, but I mean, straight away.
I love it.
Yeah, you would know, but I mean, you should be looking at it, but certainly they should help reduce the cost.
Thirty years, you know, that gets.
Don't I thought in the Bible?
I'm sorry, I took the whole thing for you guys.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh. But I, I missed that, I'm sorry, your question.
It's not a question, but we've, you know, we've, we've talked about it before, like, so what's the process if we want to, to, to the gentleman in the audience tonight? Relax the rules a little bit, so, because I mean, right now, we didn't want to get into it, but it is just discretion, you know, that's, we're looking at it and saying, we have the discretion to go vertical granite curb or, uh, a Cape Cod burn or whatever, we have the discretion to put in one sidewalk versus two, which is required, so. That's what, like Warren said, the fire body. You know, what is doing is taking that into consideration, so we're not supposed to call everything to a T, we have discretion, so. But to give that ability to help the developer ultimately maybe the town is, um, you know, in affordable housing is, how do we reduce? Certain things in the subdivision law.
You know, you know, Steve Kuzad, who was our ten in town in here for a long time, come to this meeting and say. You know, what are you doing? Do not put sidewalks on both sides, because in twenty years, you're either gonna fix one sidewalk or two. When you need one.
Right, and it's a why, you know, to.
You're gonna end up, and you're gonna. Own, and it's also one every time, and the time comes to fix them, you'll be able to fix them, if you put two on, you go in one subdivision, it's got two sidewalks, you can't just fix one side. So you'll lose all your, lose all your money on a couple, and you only fix half of what you got. He was adamant about not doing that, but also, but these thirty foot wide roads, to bring it on, you know, twenty, twenty eight, twenty four, twenty eight.
I, I mean, I think with regards to waivers, you don't have to make any effort.
Yeah.
Um, I think when you do make something, it can be because you believe it to be in the book of interest, or like, for example, I remember that, um, subdivision slash road didn't want. Sidewalk state, the neighborhood came and said, please don't put, not sidewalks, a vertical granite curving, allow it to be country range, that's what the neighborhood preferred, that required the waving of some regulations, but it's what the neighborhood wanted, it matched what else was around there, it wasn't in public interest, and it was safe, it's done. You know, if we want to actually change the rules on less morally required and not have to issue waivers for certain places and things, we just change the subdivision regulations, and those aren't town meeting rules, those are an average technical hearing, um, the C P C decides, you know, there are certain.
That's not town meeting, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was.
Still an average public hearing.
Yeah, I get you.
That was here.
Okay. I'm not saying it's the highest of priorities, but it just, it could be a part of business, you know, to look at those and have, have maybe, again. D P W, Joe, whatever, um, what are some of the things you feel are? Should be on the dog?
One of the, one of the issues, one of the issues that the state has with us. And I've actually talked to our. Our state senator about this at one point. And he's like, why do you, uh, why, why do you make it so expensive to build it already, why don't you get rid of the granite curb and the. And all this wild moving on, why don't you get rid of all that stuff, so, so that you can build subdivision that is, that is cheap enough, so that you can build a house that people can afford to buy? Because right now, you can't do that, you, because you have, but you require, you know, by the time you add up all those costs at eighty-five dollars plus the hundred twenty-five for the roadway and da-da-da-da, suddenly you put the roadway in, it costs so much money, you're adding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on each lot. And, and then, you know, you know, and so then, you, you can't afford to build anything, but a billion dollar home, because you can't recover your money out of it.
You think if they saved. Fifty grand a lot, that they build smaller houses?
Well, I mean, they want.
They sell them for less.
Yeah, I forget it.
I think they just make fifty grand more on each house.
Well, I think.
The credit curve.
Right.
Wayfield, Wayfield did a subdivision that, um, I've got a chance to go to with the, back in those days with a planner. And drove through it, and, um, just reasonably nice house, not as big as the one like a Macanat, but reasonably nice house. And they were selling for a, a rare reason, a lot amount of money. But the road was, was, I think, twenty-six feet wide. No curving at all, no, no, nothing, no, no, no amenities, nothing.
Let's say the price is market price, right? I mean, Cape's in the town to sell for seven fifty. Yeah, so if you build. Like a twenty-two hundred square foot colonial, what, because you get the developer to say he's gonna sell for eight hundred, it's not gonna go for eight hundred. Still got the market, still gonna drive, so I.
I, I, I agree with you. Right, I agree with you in a lot of ways.
To a point.
Well, what I mean is, I think, I agree with the granite curbs, because it is a quality thing, too, so if you make the argument where you're really leading a town actually in this, in the position where they're gonna have to maintain this Cape Cod burn.
Yeah.
Getting dug up, I get that, the sidewalk one to me is more of a no-brainer, because it's really just making the town have to defer that cost, or, or basically put that cost aside for ten years, whenever asphalt's gonna, you know, get.
Yeah.
More, but either way, so I agree, so there's kind of two parts, is it helping the town? Or is it helping the developer?
We're not fixing.
There, there should be like a little list of things that we can maybe look at in that.
Yeah, the granite, I feel like is just the town's benefit. The sidewalks, I feel like, we share the cost, they're gonna pay upfront, and we have the burn down the road.
And, you know, the granite, the granite is an investment, I mean, if we, if, if we can afford to do it, the granite is an investment, because it's forever.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you.
They want to create, you know.
You plow the streets. Um, you plow that, you could ride that curb and never go, never lets go, and never gives up.
Right.
So, so you, um.
Want it done, right? You do it once and it's done.
Yeah, really.
Right.
I almost thought that made sense, I hear you, seventy-four bucks a foot.
I have curb finders on my plow that, that find, that feel the, feel the curb.
Yeah.
Keep me just a little bit away from it. Um, and that's what the town does, same thing, and all they try, take a curb finder, it's go take a look on the plow, you see.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, um, and, and so that allows you to plow the street and, and not damage anything, and it's, it's good forever.
Yeah, well, I looked on Westford, and then they keep going burns, and every year, it was like. Go spray, go count the massive sections that are just.
That you get tore up.
Yeah.
And then every couple years, they come by and replace.
Certainly, the classic ones are just worthless.
Yeah.
They're utterly worthless.
I don't think it takes much at all to rip those off, you know? Try a plow, I'm sure you're.
I think Warren actually tries to rip them off. Just for fun.
I haven't written any.
To the piñata.
Maybe this, it is no ground in this.
I'm pretty keen.
I agree, I think, I think, you know.
I guess when I plow, people. You're looking at. Nothing can.
It's sharp, no.
So, um, but again, I have a curb finder that I can feel the curb. So.
I have one update, two updates, actually, one is, um, the Bloodport is having their, uh, information hearing on the warrant articles for October's town, meaning they're having that on September eighteenth, I will be there, our articles, just to review, um, the Eden Circle, Judy Fenton, and, um, the Saint Teresa, the Seven Saint Teresa House. Um, the other data I have is about Charles Street, which we haven't talked about in a little while. Um, so the conservation agent and I, um, and the town engineer all went out to Charles Street recently, and, um, for a while, I think it's gonna be a little bit better, but the erosion controls are in really bad shape right now, the catch bases are full, they're growing grass, there, I mean, it's. It's really, really not acceptable, so, um, we, we're going to be sending a letter, and I just wanted to make sure that this was okay with you, um. The letter was going to say, you know, be from the, the three departments, and just say that these are, the following items need to be addressed, and that if they are not addressed by, you know, such and such date. We will have, you know, the C P C, um, and, and we will later request the C P C to pull part of the bonds to cover the town, cleaning out those catch bases and maintaining those erosion controls, and I, before I sent anything like that, I wanted to run it by you.
Also, I, one thing I want to keep is, um. When we've had their non-compliance, you know, we've, uh, brought them in and added a clerk of the works onto the bond.
Right, we've done that, but that would require getting more money from the developer, which I don't see how we would do that.
Well.
We have money. We have money.
Bonding company is, we're gonna say with the bond company, okay, you know, we, we, I think we did it to put pressure on them to. To, um, we had, we did a lot of processes, and they're coming, we want to what?
I'm sorry.
We want to what?
Um.
It's a couple, a few houses.
Thank you, but it does not, it doesn't do us any good to hold off on, lots, lots end up all that are actually developable, but. So they, they're, they're being sold to the individual developers, so the only way to actually force anything is to actually take the. We're holding cash, there's no company involved, it's just us, it's a check that's sitting in the treasurer's office and in the account, um, and that would be out of course, we don't have charity bonds, we don't have letter of credit or bank involved, it's cash, so.
So these are temporary basins that are being.
These are supposed to be the basins that are the drainage system for the subdivision, and.
That, that, the drainage system in this particular subdivision for most. It is the thing that made it take twenty years to get a development. Yeah, the drainage is horrendous, it's very intricate. So having not be functioning properly is a bad thing.
But they, they, or the maintenance of it until the subdivision's completed, is like.
Right, well, no, it's not the street is accepted, but it's also going to accept the street in the condition that it's in, um, so.
They're not gonna finish it until they develop all. Oh, boring thing. Sorry.
You know, conservation agent and I happen to ask each other, and the previous one I dropped, but I'm seeing and asking, asking them to clean up these erosion controls, which they are required to do, they're not in compliance, and. Unfortunately, we have no ability to find, um, there's very little we should do, other than threaten their launch, so if that's not something that, not a direction we'd like to take, that's totally fine, but I, I, my recommendation is that we send them a letter saying that they have a certain amount of time to repair the situation. Or the town will take steps to request that the C P C take, fortunately, the bonds to take care of the work.
Yeah, I don't think they need to do that. I mean, I don't know if they really, sometimes, the only problem I have is sometimes they don't care. Because they've already rid that money off, you know, they don't. And they just don't care, so they.
Then we should at least do the work.
Yeah.
I guess. They can't say.
I know, yeah, it's the cost of work to complete the road.
Right now, I think our bond is. Maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's an old bond, though, so the cost of, the cost has gone up over the years, and of course, the same. Cash, I think in the treasurer's office, same amount of money, it's not, you know, hasn't been increased.
Is the developer just not paid with them, or just. Trunks it off, like?
He'll, he'll listen to our requests, um, but he won't, but he'll say.
Because he knows there's no teeth to define them.
I mean, not until.
It's not been that, it's not been very forthcoming from day one, so. I was disappointed in the law, it's just like people are still back to it, right? To develop. Well, I mean, the only danger is if we spend a third of the bond fixing everything wrong, that we only have two thirds of the bond left to finish the road if we march away.
That's true.
And so it's, that's my concern, that's why I'm, that's why I hesitate, and I'd rather drag, drag them in here. And say, okay, you know, we're gonna add a clerk of the works onto this, and we're gonna, we're gonna need more money to grow on, and else we're gonna. Shut the whole project down.
Yeah, you're gonna get more permits?
But at this point, he has everything from the, like, you can't even shut the fire down, because he has done, he has sold his lots, so there, that would do him no harm at all, I don't really think that much for us. I mean, I, I agree that we should have more money in that bond, I just don't know how we would get it.
So is he? Is it an H O A, or how are they picking up trash and doing?
Well, the D P W does it, because it's part of the road, um, and it's, it's an extension, um, it connects two streets that make.
It's, it's still gonna be maintained by the town.
Yeah.
So if it's not finished by this winter, the developer is gonna have to plow it in May.
Oh, right.
So except.
Yeah, and then we.
I can't wait to.
Oh, I get, I'm just thinking of our, my other projects, you know, until they're accepted, we're, we're doing the trash, we're doing, you know, maintain, we're the streetlights, we've had some problems with these G E L, these streetlights, everything's on our, us until it's accepted. Never sound like that here.
There was, he was contacting privately for the snowplowing, and they weren't doing it, and I should all remember how that.
She got that, I gotta stop.
They just went, they just wanted to.
I stopped, right, I stopped, I don't block them in. People, I, I, I make sure I clear the. And I turn around and hear you, and go, I.
Just trying to buy a team, you know?
Yeah, no, I don't need, and I understand my concern that we can't use the entire bonds, um, because then there would be nothing left to.
Probably smarter. I think I had a guy come running out when I was plowing, getting jealous with that, just asked, like, I'm saying, you're supposed to be plowing the street, but. I called downtown, they said you were plowing the street. Can't do it. Yeah, because you couldn't even happen on the street, yeah.
All right, it sounds to me like we should come up with some other solution, and that's fine, um, I'll leave the conservation agent and the town engineer, we'll, we'll come up with something. Oh, I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, I don't know, um. I haven't talked about it for a while, I, I mean, it seems to be that, I think, I'm on a roll.
That's the new thing.
See, that's the problem with not having a bank or something, though, because we can threaten the bank. You can tell the wisdom, you know, we're gonna, we need more money because they're not doing what they're supposed to do, and the bank will say, hey, we're gonna pull your, pull the plug on you.
Is anyone getting, is anyone going to build that?
I'm sorry.
Is anyone getting ready to start any more homes?
I'm trying to remember how many still have permits remaining, um.
Did you hold up?
Um. Holding off on trying to develop this. It's like, it's totally separate.
Yeah, you're. Panalysed, now, maybe that, you know.
Yeah.
Unless they have something in their P N S, or their, you know, the, that, that's, they have to be, I don't know, there's some language in there.
Well, you know, the only other.
Attorney, we should ask.
Well, they, they only have. The only other way pressure would be for, for some of the developers that are in there to get together. And go after, and file suit against them.
But again, there could be language, though, in the sale that, that stipulates that they need to have a permit, you know, there must be no impetus to a permit, and that gives them some clawback, or, I don't know. Likely not.
There are also, there are also having a civil matter between the. Between the developers that bought the lots. And the developer, so, um, of, of the project, where they say, you were supposed, you're supposed to take care of this, you do it. Um, you know, so, uh, let them.
I just find it hard to believe, though, that if you're, you, you, you know, you're gonna buy a lot, you've signed a P N S that you wouldn't have in it, some language that says. I'm gonna have a road that's completed.
It wasn't now, the conservation, I'll go. Conservation.
Get that all.
If, if they don't keep that up, conservation can bring, can bring them a cease and desist.
No, so. Only some of the homes are, yeah, so there are annihilation of certain things, but only some, but they're not directly impacting the wetlands according to the conservation agent, now, she has fined them, but the way their fining works is she has to write out a fine every single day. In order for that to stay valid, she has actually done it in the past, but it hasn't worked, because.
So it's still on water maintenance of certain areas, resources that are not being maintained.[1761.35] But it's not assigned necessarily a lot or anything, right?
Well, it's both. It's some of the lots are, have resource area in them and some of them don't. Um, and the roadway itself, portions of it do and portions of it don't, but right now she does not feel that she, well, it's a terrible situation, it shouldn't be in the way it is, it's not actually impacting the wetlands to a degree that she could actually.
Should have done.
Type them again.
So you've got to hold up the building, isn't it?
Yeah.
If she's still on, okay.
Yep. For the team.
You couldn't hold up a building permit if part of that lot was in the resource area?
Oh, you could.
Project was not in performance, you couldn't say, you're not starting this house until this whole project comes out of performance?
You could, but it, it's not.
It's a bit of a reach, but.
But it's not his anymore. And we've heard from the individual owners that he's not responsible to their.
But it would make that lead on the developer.
Yes.
I can't get my building permit because the resource area on my property is not in compliance of town official.
Well, the, the resource area, that's different. Conservation can go up. But that's not really what's happening. The problems are, it's not the wetlands that are being impacted. It's the catch basins, it's the, it's full of sediment because they're not.
Are you sure they're not being impacted?
I'm sorry?
Are you sure they're not being impacted?
I mean, that's up to her to make a, you know, judgment on it.
Yeah, so, I gotta say, I'll be there actually somewhere.
Then it all, I mean, it's all interconnected with stormwater access. Are the, are the, are the um silt stacks punctured or are they just full of sediment?
Some of them are completely full.
Yeah.
Some of them are invisible because they're just buried. They're just buried in that much dirt, it's that bad.
So in, in the elk fall though, did you guys walk to any of the elk falls where the catch basins come out?
Did you go down to the bottom of Charles Street, see where that enters onto the wetland down there?
Go to the three Charles behind there. Been back there now. It's water that's going through, but it's not that there's no water.
Is it sedimented out at the outlet though?
I don't know. That, no, no.
That's usually, and then, and again, that's, that's an expense and then you gotta go in there and you gotta redo that. Um you know, that's what I get, you know, that's what happens when silt stacks.
In that, in that catch basin at the top of Charles, the original Charles.
It's flooding.
That water runs into that thing twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. That water and I know since the driest, the driest of driest years, I've gone up there and looked in there and the water's pouring in there.
See, now I have a question. So the original developer is, that, that put this project together originally had an agreement with the town? Is that how I understand this?
No, it was an approval that he had, so he had first.
Okay, so but he had approval and part of that approval was for him to maintain. It's, and.
He's, he's required to do it. Yeah, by our approval, by our authority, right?
So.
Yeah.
So then if, if the town takes on that responsibility, can the town back charge?
We can take the bond and fix it.
Well, that's, well, that's what I'm trying to get at.
But the problem, but I, 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 I don't. Haven't been through one where, where the developer walked away, we had to take the bond and didn't have enough money in it. And we had to have our town engineer, we could, the works, try to finish the project and we had to skimp on a few things. And the only way we got street trees in there is that we had, we had bought I'd imagine you had like two hundred trees, because we had this big thing, we were gonna plant street trees up and down Route twenty-eight. And we were giving them away, we managed to give away the tree. That's all, nobody else wanted the tree. So we ended up removing all those trees and that was what we used to finish the subdivision with. Uh, and I have a long history on this board, that's quite a story.
It is so great. Oh, so how do we, what lessons learned here? So Daniel, help us, because you have, you're the historian here as well as Warren. So what do we do in the future with even this group here?
This has never happened, like, I've never seen this happen. Most developers.
Is it duration? Is that what, so.
It's duration and the rest.
Yeah.
See now, if you have, if you have a private type or a letter of credit or something like that, it has an expiration date, it has to be renewed on a regular basis, but a check, the check can sit there forever.
And we weren't asked, when we are up, when they're up for renewal, the check, contract agreements and the letters of credit, we never asked for more money, at least we haven't in all these years.
So we did, we did before.
Didn't they, you could lease money though, right?
When we had uh like a third or fourth and we definitely added that clerk of the works cost on.
But did he, is this a one-time thing? He's never come back and looked for any reduction in the bond or in?
No, he's actually interested in getting his bonds back, because he has two bonds. One of them was for the off-site work. Um, but I mean, I don't really recommend releasing.
No, I don't think you want to give anything back.
But I just mean that, you know, there's a process where you submit to engineering or planning and say, you know, we've done, completed X lines, the, the original. Because usually we need to come up with a bond, right? It's the cost of the work, a bond associated with it, then, so he's done that.
Yeah, it's um.
So it started at one and it's down to just big dollars, like it's.
I would say it's around two fifty and two eighty-five, it's not a lot of money.
Is what's left, like it was much higher before?
Yeah.
Yeah. Two million, so.
A lot more.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but he still has the sidewalks for him, still has.
Planting.
He's still, they had built.
As though, um, he still has to TV the whole drainage system, but it's because we know where they're compromised and we passed it.
They're gonna find tons of sediment too, so we should check that out.
They made a mess when they did, they, they, they made a mess when they did that offsite. They had, we had actually, I actually did all, all the original work and then we had to hire um, um, what's it, Tenelli to, um, to come in and uh Tenelli to come in and dig it all back up again, fix it.
Why it was all these bellies?
No, no, both, both all types.
Oh, wow.
Brush that we, you know. He had, he had some kid that he had hired to run the machine, the kid was like, sure, I'm going to enjoy it.
You're mad for life.
It was, it was, it was awful, it was awful. I was out there ten times in the rain.
All right.
I wanted to get.
That went well.
Thanks, Daniel.
No, I'm with you. I'm with you, like, what do we do?
I don't think we're in the problem of the solution tonight, but it's a good point that we don't have a large enough bond probably to start spending it on that. We probably need to be able to finish it. So um, let me re, re-discuss this with conservation and engineering and see what they see with nothing. We'll come up with some other proposal.
Violations, yeah, that should put the team into the conservation, pull up all the banks.
I mean, conservation, they feel that they've done what they can in terms of the violations.
If you're gonna start construction, you're gonna be bringing people's in on those roads, right, that are having runoff, that's contaminated, that's flowing into the back.
And they're just inviting, it's all tied together.
Disturbing, you know, disturbing the sites.
Yeah.
Well, they're inviting, you don't want to take them out, you don't want to try to put my finisher on till we're done.
No, don't say I want to finish it off, saying like if someone was to hold building permit, you say the site, the overall site development is not in condition.
Is the SWIP still active? Is the SWIP still active, active with that site, you know, that whole development?
Is the one.
Is the SWIP active, right?
Yeah, so yeah. In violation, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna.
Yeah.
Full one.
Yeah, it's gonna be in violation then, with the catch bases, old buildings though.
Right.
You're supposed to be filing inspection reports and all that stuff, you're not doing any of that. Okay, so to me it's like this terms to.
You can't do anything else on site.
I could, you know, and I know that puts the pressure on the, the landowner, the lot owner if they wanted to build, but who else is we gonna pressure like?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, if there's enough of that, then like to your point, I mean, there's enough people pushing in a certain direction and they're not happy.
I mean, also because we can't get.
Lawyer, can the, can they help with the building in the long term? Probably not.
Well, that's why I'm just wondering if there's any teeth in any of those agreements that they have recourse, they're not giving a road, I mean, yes.
I mean, I think, yeah, and I think from the building inspector's you know, perspective, I, I could say, no, I don't agree with the issuance of another building from their CEO, but he really has to issue that stuff unless there's a problem with the charter. So for us to ask him to not issue it, it's a very, very tough decision. And also it's not even the person who's, you know, and I understand the idea that some of the private parties put pressure, but they're not gonna put pressure on, they're not gonna push on this. Because that's.
I agree with it.
So it's.
Yeah, stakes.
Something else.
We can talk construction if, if like stormwater, if SWIP stuff is in place, Daniel.
We can, but what Daniel's saying is right, we're kind of like, the parties have now is separated, you have the, the landowner that's going, looking for building permit, and you have the developer who's just MIA. So we're, we're, our battles really with that developer.
But he also had people falling out with, with original contract to sell it. And that, that whole, that was a mess, that was a mess.
Well, if, if the developer comes to the town to develop something else.
He's not really, he's not.
He doesn't know anymore, thank God.
Oh, yeah.
So, so um, so yeah, so that was, that's probably one of the bigger problems is that he he had fallen out with his, with his, uh, and they all, they all went to court. That thing got shut down for a while when they went to court. So um, uh, thrashed the whole thing, thrashed the whole thing out, so he doesn't have a, um he doesn't have a, a regular contractor in there. I don't know who actually finished any of this. Think he had the grantee go in there and do some work, uh, finish some of the stuff, but he doesn't have.
Do you want to start writing the article now that the town transfer Ylano? Let's start, start writing it.
Let's hope it doesn't.
Article number four, forty-five, right at the end. Send Warren up again.
Um, hi.
All of you who supported my piñata, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I will read this of this, the departments that I mentioned and we'll, we'll try to come up with some other suggestions, so.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Well, the only thing, other thing I would say at this point, this is, you know, we have, we I would think, the reason we did the clerk of the works thing is because we learned from the bad experience that we put the clerk of the works thing in. So um, now we have another one where we say, how, how could we, how could we have prevented this from happening? You know, uh, within, you know, within the rule and regulations, how could we prevent us from getting in this position again?
So it is to be that, and it is again, there was always a standard condition that the work has to be done within two years.
Years, right.
And then for a while, they weren't putting that condition in and during the years that they weren't putting that condition in, this subdivision was approved and so there was never a stipulation in their saying.
Five, five approvals on this line, five times, we went through the whole process on, on this site. We'd get it all approved and everything and then it would just sit there and then it would just, it would fall down, they would just, everybody would disappear.
For two years?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Like going expire?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and then they come back and they try again and they do another one, they do another one. But none of them really, only the last one really, as far as I could see, only the last was the only one that was actually viable. Peter Ogan pays. Um, you know, I, he really, he really outdid himself in the drainage situation and because at the time um that was the thing, you know, I mean, he I didn't think it could be done, but when he was done with it, it worked. He really did do a good job on, on the drainage in the site, because that was, that's what was killing the site all the time, trying to control the water. With so much water, there's so much groundwater, so many springs. So much dark water coming out, water coming out of that site constantly.
One of the springs is not under control, the, the last house um before the, before.
Deerfield?
Deerfield um has a spring and they have not been able to control the, the groundwater.
Wow.
So right now they have a pipe, just piping all that groundwater out into the street, which was a temporary solution that the previous town engineers said they could do for a little while. But they can't find another solution, so that water's just getting piped and it's full of silt and it's full of sediment and it's completely covering over a catch basin and, you know, Leah and I went out there last week and we met with the homeowner and we're like, can't, we just can't keep it like this. In the winter it will freeze over and look at the state of this, he was like, I don't know what else to do. I have a spring in my yard, it just, so I don't know what, what happened there. It's just, I don't know.
Well, I would have to say that they might not have followed that, because he knew about that spring, there was actually two of them and he knew about that because he dressed it in the plan.
It might have.
I knew about it, so I made sure he dressed it in the plan.
I don't know, it might have, it probably has to do with the way the house was cited, the way it was built, that it wasn't high enough, I don't know.
It's just a coin fund?
I'm sorry?
A coin fund?
Yes, the, the Churney Fountain, I'm sorry, no. There is.
And what a rafting maybe? I think what they really need is void words, you know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can't make it either.
Bring wild it.
Yeah, boil it, yeah.
Yeah. So that, that, for the healthy shapeless.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that one, you already have a, they're one, that new one they just put in North Street, I mean, on, on. Um, it's sinking into the ground, they just finished building and settling into the wood. New one they just built on North, on, on. One, one, two, three houses down. On the left is, on the right.
On right.
Yeah, going toward from Three Dog and Maple Street, yeah. I thought you were gonna say a lot of that.
Me too.
That one that's kind of like the total, what issue it, you know, for, well, I don't know about that one. Still has a deal, but I think they dug that one out properly, so, but this one, I think they um moved it back and built it on top of the P. Oh, good idea. Garage floor cracked, I'll, I'll actually stop and go like this.
Oh, really?
Get the river down, uh, get the river down. I don't see any other choice back there. Once it reaches the point where it becomes unhabitable, that's, you're looking at, so. Build that, uh, build that, I don't know, it was bought by some conglomerate out of Florida or some ways down south, there's a bunch of people just went down, started controlling it, you know, from the fire.
You done? Good?